To call to order the January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of Plymouth Township Council, please rise for the pleasure.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic's precious sanctity, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into the agenda, I just have to make one quick U-turn, detour. We're going to call a very brief executive session to discuss a matter later on in the agenda, so we're going to adjourn this meeting for just a couple of minutes. We're going to leave and then we'll come right back in and head to the bell. Meeting is unadjourned? Readjourned?
We're back in session.
Legal ease for convenience? Reconvene. Is there any public comment about?
The board held an executive session to discuss a matter of potential litigation.
I was going to say that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Any public comment about the agenda? Okay, an announcement that in addition to the executive sessions that was just held, executive sessions were held December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, and January third, two thousand and twenty-three. At this time, I'll ask for approval of the minutes from the workshop meeting on December fifth, the special meeting on December twelfth, and the regular meeting on December twelfth, all of two thousand and twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Whitney, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett, comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Approval of departmental reports and bills, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Bandish, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett, comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Moving down to administration tonight, we have our liquid fuels resolution for action. Ms. Bandish.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Whereas Plymouth Township receives an allocation of liquid fuel packs from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, and whereas Act Number One-fourteen of nineteen ninety-eight Two has amended by Act Number Two thousand and four, one thirty-eight, establishes the authorized expenditures of liquid fuel taxes by municipalities. Now therefore be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council does hereby authorize the expenditure of the township allocation of liquid fuel taxes from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation as follows: to be expended by the authorities of the respective municipalities, one, for the maintenance, repair, construction, or reconstruction of such public roads or streets, including bridges, culverts, and drainage structures for which they are legally responsible, and including the lining of streams incidental to the drainage of highways; and for the maintenance, repair, construction, or reconstruction of curb ramps from a road, street, or highway to provide for access by individuals with disabilities consistent with federal and state law; two, for the acquisition, maintenance, repair, and operation of street signs, traffic signs, and traffic signal control systems; three, for the maintenance, repair, reconstruction, or reconstruction of alleys, ways, and courts for which they are legally responsible, where road, bridge, alleyway, or court work is performed by the political subdivision, and the monies herein allocated may be used only for labor, hiring, equipment, payrolls, purchase of materials including road repair parts necessary for the maintenance of equipment, small tools, road drags, and snow fences, and in addition, an amount not to exceed twenty percentum of the total annual application received by each municipality may be used for the purchase of road machinery and road equipment; and four, for the acquisition of computer-related hardware, software, and training required for the electronic processing of information concerning the funds appropriated and allocated under this act, including the preparation and electronic submission of the required annual reports of payment certification, provided that expenditures under this subclause may not exceed one thousand dollars annually. Duly presented and adopted by Plymouth Township Council at a public meeting held on the ninth day of January two thousand and twenty-three. Do I make a motion to adopt this resolution?
There's a motion from Ms. Bandish to adopt the liquid fuels resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Visio, comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next for action under administration is a professional consultant's fee resolution. Ms. Bramblett?
Thank you. Resolution of Plymouth Township, County of Montgomery, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, establishing an escrow fee schedule for subdivision and land development applications. Whereas the Plymouth Township Township is a home-ruled township duly organized and existing pursuant to the applicable laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and whereas pursuant to section five oh three of the Municipal Planning Code, fifty-three P.S., section one zero five zero three, the township is permitted to require an applicant or his or her designate to reimburse the township reasonable and necessary costs associated with the review and processing of subdivision and/or land development applications, including legal and engineering cost. And whereas Appendix C, subdivision and land development of the Plymouth Township Code of Ordinances, allows the Township Council to establish an escrow fee schedule related to subdivision and land development matters within the township, and require the deposit of an escrow fee fund for payment of the above-named professional fees. And whereas the Plymouth Township Council believes it is in the best interest of the township to establish a fee schedule that will hereafter be applicable to all subdivision and land development matters currently pending or hereafter submitted to the township. Now therefore be it resolved, for the reasons set forth above, in addition to the existing required application fees and minimum escrow review fee deposits, which shall be submitted concurrently with any application for subdivision or land development within Plymouth Township, the applicant or his or her agent shall reimburse to the township the reasonable and necessary expenses incurred by the township for the review and report on subdivision and land development plots, plans, and surveys by the township's professional consultant; and for the inspection of improvements by the township's professional consultants based upon the schedule of review and inspection fees set forth below. Service Township Solicitor at the rate of two hundred and ten dollars an hour, Township Engineer, one hundred and forty-five dollars an hour, Township Planner, one hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, Traffic Engineer, one hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour, Landscape Architect, one hundred and thirty dollars an hour, Lighting Consultant, one hundred and ten dollars an hour, Structural Engineer, one hundred and thirty dollars an hour, Sanitary Sewer Engineer, one hundred and thirty dollars an hour. Advertising costs will be billed at cost, recording fees will be billed at cost, stenographic charges will be billed at cost, and other consultants will be at a township-approved rate to be amended from time to time. I hereby certify that this resolution was adopted by Plymouth Township at its public meeting held on the ninth day of January two thousand and twenty-three. I make a motion that we adopt the professional consultant fee resolution.
There's a motion from Ms. Bramblett, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish, comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
The chair votes in favor. Police, Public Safety, Chief, anything to add?
No, I've got to thank you.
Mr. Ward?
Oh, I missed one.
You did.
Make mistakes every once in a while. Sorry. Back to administration under C, we have our ward reapportionment vote. Ms. Visio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Whereas pursuant to the September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one census, Plymouth Township has a population of eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-six residents. Whereas section three oh two of the Plymouth Township Home and Chartered requires for four districts to have, quote, "more than ten percent variance from the mean in any such district in Florida." Whereas according to view of the population of the four districts for the most recent census, they are all within the ten percent range. Therefore, I motion counsel to maintain the current district numbers.
Is that a resolution?
It's just a, it's a, it's a vote, it's a motion and a vote.
Got it.
I made the motion.
Got it.
She moved.
All right. Is there a motion to approve that resolution? Sorry. Moment, movement, motion? I should just hang it up. Motion from Ms. Visio, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Whitney, comments or questions from council or from the audience? Essentially, the long of it is that the four wards stay the same after the census, no change in the boundaries. Comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Chief, officially.
Officially, no, I have nothing to add.
Thank you. Moving down to public works, I will take the honor of reading our snow announcement. Some reminders for the winter season. It is unlawful to park or abandon a car on any street within twelve hours after a snowfall of three inches or more. Vehicles will be towed at the owner's expense. Use off-street parking when snow is predicted. When you park your car in the driveway, there's less snow to shovel. On-street parking, only where no off-street parking is available, is the only permitted, is only permitted on the even-numbered side of the street in even years and on the odd-numbered side of the street in odd years. Never approach moving snow removal equipment. Just because you can see the driver does not mean that he can see you. We try to keep our crews fresh and rested, but extended weather emergencies can mean long hours for township employees. Please keep children and pets off the streets. Property owners are required to clear their sidewalks at least thirty inches wide within thirty-six hours of when the snow stops. When shoveling your driveway, pile the snow to the right. This will prevent the plow from covering your driveway opening again. Do not shovel or plow snow into the street. Plows will just move it back onto your driveway or sidewalk. If the plow has already passed, do not put snow from your driveway into the street. It will refreeze and create a hazard. If there's a fire hydrant by your home, consider adopting it. You know where it is. If it's obscured by snow, fire companies responding to emergencies may not find it. Clearing snow from the hydrant helps protect you and your neighbors. Moving down to engineering, Mr. Manai, anything to add?
Nothing to report tonight, sir.
Okay, going down to subdivision and land development plans currently under review, we have an extension request, Mr. Whitney.
All right, in regards to the property at fifteen oh eight Sandy Hill Road, an extension was requested until the date of February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and I would make a motion that we grant this extension.
A motion from Mr. Whitney, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett, comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing?
I'm sorry.
Am I, did I make another mistake? I'm a little on edge. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Moving down to conditionally approved projects that have not yet been reported, we have two extension requests. First one, Mr. Whitney.
On behalf of the Alba family, in regards to the plan titled Tomorrow/Farefield Road, there is a request for an extension until February first, two thousand and twenty-three. And I would make a motion that we grant this extension.
There's a motion from Mr. Whitney, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Visio, comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Chair votes in favor. Next one is twenty-six twenty-two Butler Pike Extension, Ms. Visio.
Chair, I have a letter from Mr. Edward Hughes about the property twenty-six twenty-two Butler Pike, on a follow-track, craft, custom bones LLC. This applicant is requesting an extension of time from January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, to February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, to file a land development plan and agrees to pay the agreed fee fees and assessments to be done at the time of reporting. I believe that we accept your suggestion.
There's a motion from Ms. Visio, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish, comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Moving down to projects currently under construction, we have one escrow release tonight for the Wawa at thirteen hundred Ridge Pike, Mr. Whitney.
All right, in regards to the Wawa through store thirteen hundred Ridge Pike, it is recommended that we go through and go for a final escrow release in regards to this project, and I would make a motion that we grant this escrow release.
There's a motion from Mr. Whitney, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett, comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Chair votes in favor. Moving down to zoning, Ms. Visio?
I have a notice of public hearing, the zoning hearing board of Plymouth Township will hold the public hearing on Monday, January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, commencing at seven p.m. in the Greater Plymouth Community Center at twenty-nine ten, Jollawo in Plymouth Meeting, on the following applications. The first, Joseph Calafano, on an application for a variance for Plymouth Township zoning ordinance number three four two, as amended, vertical nineteen, section one nine zero nine. The variance requested is as follows: to request for an eight-foot-tall, fenced section. Property is located at two oh four Knights Court in the C Residential Zoning District. The second is Butler Pike Apartments LLC, on an application for variance from Plymouth Township zoning ordinance number three four two, as amended, article seven, section seven hundred dot A. The variance requested is as follows: to use the dwelling as a duplex residence with the same footprint and dwelling. This property is located at one two three four Butler Pike, lots one and two, in the C Residential Zoning District. The third, Butler Pike Apartments LLC, on an application for variance from Plymouth Township zoning ordinance number three four two, as amended, article seven, section seven hundred dot A. The variance requested is as follows: to use the dwelling as a duplex residence with the same footprint and dwelling. The property is located at one two three four Butler Pike, lots one and two, in the C Residential Zoning District. The fourth is Butler Pike Apartments LLC, on an application for variance from Plymouth Township zoning ordinance number three four two, as amended, article seven, section seven hundred dot A. The variance requested is as follows: to realize and use existing dwelling as a duplex with the same footprint and dwelling. This property is located at one three one six Butler Pike, in the C Residential Zoning District. Any citizen of Plymouth Township or interested parties may attend to the public hearing and have an opportunity to rehearse. At this time, I make a motion that Plymouth Township send our solicitor to oppose the Butler Pike Apartments LLC applications.
Okay, there's a motion for opposition from Ms. Visio, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish, comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
The chair votes in favor. Next is Parks and Recreation, upcoming events, Ms. Bandish?
The Plymouth Township Parks and Recreation Program spotlights at the Greater Plymouth Community Center for January two thousand and twenty-three. Available now are winter brochures, the pool party bundles, and personal training. On Sunday, January fifteenth, there will be a Sunday Fun Day Pool Party. On Friday, January twenty-seventh, it's going to be Family Bingo. Friday, February tenth, Sweetheart Dance. Saturday, February twenty-fifth, Plymouth Township Black Heritage Day. Did I miss one? Friday, one twenty-seven, Family Bingo. I can't forget a bingo. I guess I really did. And don't forget that veterans banners for the Greater Plymouth Community Center, the deadline for ordering it is April the first. Details are available in our brochure, using the app, on our website, on social media, or you can just call the center at six one zero two seven seven four three twelve.
Thank you, Ms. Bandish. Moving down to miscellaneous and old business, we have Citizens Board vacancies to announce. Ms. Bramblett?
Thank you. All residents wishing to serve on the following citizen boards are asked to submit their resume or a letter stating their interest to the Township Manager, seven hundred Belphar Road, Plymouth Meeting, PA, one nine four six two, or via email to kwise@plymouthtownship.org. The following citizen board positions are open. Property Maintenance Code Appeals Board, three positions open. Historical Architectural Review Board, two positions open. Environmental Advisory Board, one position. Human Relations Commission, one position. Parks Recreation and Shade Tree Advisory Board, one position. And the Zoning Hearing Board has one position.
Thank you, Ms. Bramblett. Next is an appointment to the Historic Architecture and Review Board, Ms. Bandish?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Estelle Ronderos to the Historical Architectural Review Board. She contacted the township, expressed her interest, sent an email saying that she would like to be considered, and listed her qualifications, and on reflection, we would like to offer her the position.
There's a motion from Ms. Bandish to make this appointment, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Whitney, comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Is there any, any comments from the audience tonight? Anything additional from council?
Audience participation?
Yeah, just ask.
Oh. I thought it was like new business, but, but it's old business.
We don't have a microphone here.
No, but my voice is pretty good.
Well, you still have to come up and identify yourself, but if you stand in that spot there, or sit, can you think you can hear her? She sits in the front row. Bring up a hot seat.
You want me to bring up the seat?
You can. That's good, you're good right there.
Okay. So my name is Artis Lukens. I'm at five oh eight Conchacan Road. I just want to give you an update on, I'll sit down, an update on Conchacan Road. We have seen police park at light and Conchacan Road. We can tell, we can tell because the cars slow down when they're there, and then as soon as they leave, they speed up. So we know that there are police there, and we thank you for that. I don't quite know what is going on with PennDOT, but I do know that there has been police activity. The bad news is, we have lost two neighbors because of the traffic, so two neighbors are moving out on between Light Street and, and the bridge. Yeah, two good neighbors are moving out, which leaves pretty much half that block abandoned. Nobody wants to live on that street. The other thing is that my car was hit about two weeks ago at twelve forty-five. Luckily, we got it on tape. One of the neighbors that's leaving actually got it all on tape. Guy in a black pickup truck came swinging around the curve to go down on Light Street. My parked car was parked there, and he hit it, kept on going, went around, cut across the lawn in between two houses, and went back to Conchacan. I did report it to Sergeant Costello, and I have to fill out a report, but that's eight thousand dollars worth of damage to a parked car on Light Street, which is a dead end. Just to give you an idea of how fast he was going, it was eight thousand dollars worth of damage. So, you know, we still have issues with Conchacan Road and Light Street. Now we're losing, we're losing neighbors. Cars are getting damaged. So I'm, you know, I, I'm curious as to know what's going on with PennDOT. One of the neighbors on Old Down Street did call PennDOT, and she spoke with a Ms., I gotta put my phone up, because I can't read it, a Ms. Johnson, that, who told her that the township does not need PennDOT permission to install a crosswalk as long the, as long as the walk is connecting two streets, which it clearly would, Light Street to Light Street, Conchacan. PennDOT only needs to be involved when the township is seeking to erect signage. So it would be very nice if we could get a crosswalk. It would be even nicer if we could get a crosswalk with lighted signage that said pedestrian crossing, which they have in Spring City. If you go down twenty-three in Spring City, just about every block, they have crosswalks and a lighted thing that says you have to yield for pedestrians. So that's, that's my report on what is going on on Conchacan Road. Oh, and there's less noise. I don't know what Tornette is doing, but there's less noise as well. But thank you.
John, would you be interested in providing an update of what your communication's been?
Certainly. And I'm sorry if you haven't been getting the information. I was asked, Sergeant Costello, as of today, since you left your voicemail, but if you want to do it directly with me, that's fine.
Either, I don't, either way is fine.
But what happened so far is we looked into speed cameras, and we found out that they are only legal in the city of Philadelphia or in construction zones on state roads. PennDOT has to approve of that, so they're not an option in that area.
I thought they were approved as of last week or the week before last.
What, did the, the state legislature change the whole, is that what you're saying?
I don't know, I saw something in The Inquirer, I'll have to look it up.
I know that there was something about red light cameras, because we did get something about if there was any interest in that, but speed cameras. As of a week ago, precisely, we looked it up, it's only allowed in the city of Philadelphia for construction zones. The other issue was bus cameras, and we, I talked to members of the school board, they invited me to come to their meeting in January, I was going to come there, but there is an issue with enforcing the tickets that are given. There are civil tickets that are given by a company that handles the bus cameras, and if somebody contests it, what's supposed to happen is the police department then writes a citation and goes and defends it. Well, since it's a civil matter, district justices are holding the township, whatever municipality, and sometimes the individual officer, if the case is lost, to make good on court costs, and we can't have that. State police has made this argument with the state legislature, to no avail, and state police have said that until it's fixed, they will not be enforcing those types of violations. So I've got to go along with that, because I can't put the township in jeopardy. I'm still encouraging the school district to put the cameras on the buses, to let this agency cite people civilly. The only thing is going to be if they contest it, we're at a stance, at least for the time being, but that's how, you know, how that's going. And as far as PennDOT's going, we just got an email today from our traffic engineer. We're going through the traffic engineer to recommend a four-way stop sign. They're doing what they need to do, they requested some information from us, which we're going to provide by tomorrow. And we also asked them, in addition to the four-way stop sign, that we wanted a crosswalk, but since they have to be involved with signage, that's why we included it all for them to do, because we would like that signage too.
Okay.
I actually think a crosswalk might be dangerous if we did have the sign saying it's there, because people might think it's safe to cross when nobody's paying attention. So everything pretty much is moving along as expected. They get great news on some of the issues, and if you have any information on speed cameras, please get that to me.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll look it up, there was something in The Inquirer.
So we're just waiting, there's a process, but the traffic engineer is following it the way PennDOT says it has to be, to put signage and do these things, and we're hopeful, and we'll continue to, we'll continue to enforce that in there also. And I know that Mr. Tornette did put dirt in that area, and in the spring, he's supposed to pave over it, so that should help with that, with that noise.
And, and I haven't really heard the trucks at all, so that's great.
Good.
He just did it Friday.
Huh?
He just did it this day, Friday.
What, put the dirt down?
Put the dirt down.
Oh.
So Chief, is the school board interested in the school buses having cameras for people passing illegally?
I spoke to the vice president, Gail Plant, and she said that it was something that she had actually brought up before.
Oh, good.
Norristown School District took advantage of it.
Right.
But Colonial did, because they have so many more kids, there would be more of an expense, but from my understanding, it's there's grants out there, shouldn't cost them any money, because the money is made by the company that gives out the, the citation. So we're working on that, and it's really going to be between, I, I've notified so far the superintendent and the school board, so it's, it's starting, and I'll, I'm going to try and go to the meeting in January and see if I can convince them to take advantage of any grants that are out there.
Thank you. Chief, if, I, I understand your concerns about being held responsible if the court can lose, but I mean, we could pick and choose what we pursued, like for me, a car that goes by a stop bus with the, with the stop sign out and the four ways going, that one, to me, is an extremely dangerous situation. Could we do that? I'd like to take extreme cases like that, where it's clear, like the evidence is clear.
I mean, I'd have to discuss it with the township, with the manager, with the solicitor. I mean, I'd have to discuss it with the township, with the manager, with the solicitor to see. I mean, I can't put the township in a position unless it's something that they say, yes, we're comfortable with that. What I can say is that, whereas you can't use the camera specifically, that doesn't mean that if the bus driver who's driving the bus can say, I witnessed this, and based on what I saw, and yes, that was the person, we can issue a citation based on information received, and that's a criminal matter, that's not a civil matter. So there's still other ways to do it. It's just this specific way is, is civil litigation according to, well, the way the law's written and according to the district justices. So while that's being tweaked, we certainly can use the bus driver and anybody else who might have been at the bus stop who said that they witnessed something, we use their information and proceed without any problem.
Thank you. Would we need a license or something like that? I mean, it would be difficult to give an eyewitness.
You would need something. And, you know, I hate to put any additional pressure on people that are at bus stops, but if you have your cell phone with you and you take a snapshot, if you get anything like that, or a description of the car, chances are if anybody's coming through in the morning, it means they're going to work, coming back, and then we can sit there and look for that car. And if you say, yeah, that definitely was the car, and I reckon then we can take action.
Okay.
So there's a bunch of different ways to do something.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Is there any additional audience participation?
Carol Bethan, 519 Old Elm Street, Plymouth Township. Your, our channel 22, for the township news and everything, has been out for nearly three weeks now. I called the cable company, and they said it has to do with you people.
Yes, it does, it does have to do with us, and we know it's down. We know that it's down.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there is a problem with, with it, but I'll talk to the IT director tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, but, yes, I know it's down. Sorry about that. Yeah.
Can I ask how much money we're giving Plymouth Ambulance Association?
Off the top of my head, I want to say $65,000.
Do we know that money is going to be used properly?
I believe it will be. I mean, they, they get audited every year.
Well, with the shenanigans a few years ago.
I remember.
We used the funds.
I do remember, but I don't think that happens anymore.
Okay.
They, they do get audited every year now.
When Harmanville is going to build their new fire company in Herman Town Pike?
They're hoping to, yes.
Is Plymouth Ambulance going to be involved in that fire company?
No, separate entity.
Okay. Okay. Okay, what's next? The employees in the township that do not pay a water or sewer bill?
There wouldn't be any of those that I know of. Everybody pays a water.
The union workers?
I'm sorry?
The union workers?
Yes, everybody receives a sewer bill if they're hooked to the public sewer.
Everybody pays a water and sewer bill?
Well, everybody who has public water pays a water bill. If you have a well, you don't, and if you have an on-lot septic, you don't, but if you have public water, you pay Aqua for Pennsylvania American, and if you have public sewer, everyone gets a bill. No one is exempt from that.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional audience participation?